Restorer of Streets with Dwellers. Let us pray. Dear God, we ask for your blessings on this city council who lead this city and this city. We ask that all the deliberations of this council and these decisions of the council be filled with wisdom, that honest dialogue take place, and that differences be discussed without anger. We ask that you bless the city and make it a place of peace and harmony for all people, a place where disputes and disagreements are settled peaceably, where there are opportunities for all people to prosper, and where there's opportunities to serve each other. We ask for your blessings on this meeting and all the meetings of the city council, all those who serve and work for the city, and all those who live in the city of Cape Girardeau. We ask this in the name of our Savior. Amen.
Now, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Is anybody here to appear for items that are not on tonight's agenda? If so, you can come forward. Not on the agenda tonight. Last call. All right. Agenda review.
We have a couple items tonight from study session and then presentations, council. But our agenda is really a rather short one. It's two public hearings. We have a public hearing on Chapter 30, Code of Ordinances. This changes the item so that we can have temporary uses for properties that are beyond one month. This was asked for by developers who were using their property for like fruit stands and things like that. And then our second one is the public hearing on the budget, which we'll cover. And then consistent agenda, I believe, is the second, third readings from last time. Are there any of those items that you have a question for or that you need to abstain from?
I'm trying to pull it up, and I think it was...
Five and six?
Five and six. All that I need to abstain is due to financial conflict.
New ordinances tonight. We have the establishing of utility rates, the first reading of that. We have small increases in utility rates within what's allowed by the charter. It's 2% or less. And so we begin to enact those. Number eight is the item from the public hearing on temporary uses. Number nine is the rest of the budget, the first reading of that. I'm often asked if we come up with a change necessary between the first reading and the second and third reading. Can you make those? If they're minor changes, yes, you can. You can make amendments prior to the second and third reading on the budget if necessary. Number 10 is the, our consolidated grant agreement with the Zorochouan Transportation Commission for our Cempo, which is our metropolitan planning organization work. We've been doing that for the last several years. And then 11 adopts a relocation policy in connection with our redevelopment projects. Recently, attorneys looked at our downtown TIFF and recommended that we make this change to be in compliance. So that does that. We don't really anticipate any relocations within that TIFF, but should something come up that we're not anticipating, this allows us to already have that relocation policy in place. Any other questions on the agenda? Do you have appointments? That's the appointment of both of them.
All right. The next order of business is a presentation for the beautiful Business Property of the Month. And Julia, if you could come up and Robbie, you still on the committee?
I don't know.
No?
Ryan is.
Ryan is.
I just found out.
Oh, well, then you should. There are any representatives from...
Kelly, you're... I present you with this.
Do I need to get up?
Hi, Jay.
Am I supposed to get up?
Yes.
Okay.
For all your work.
All my hard work. There he is, first member of the committee now. Just by the way, we always do this every month, and there's a lot of beautiful properties in the community, but I'm always thinking of recognizing that this month. And I appreciate your interest in keeping the property kept up and looking that good. City, high and large, is looking really good this year. We've had a lot of rain. We've had a lot of green stuff growing, and I anticipate there's going to be a lot of yards and such, and field flowers here. It's like, if you see what you're doing, thank you very much.
We've been in business since he's probably on his own. He was like very particular about his own yard, his building. So Vince, my husband Vince and I, we carry on just like that way. And Steve Fessy and his crew help us clean it up every spring, so we appreciate that. Vince and I kind of, you know, we're kind of plan it all. And then our honorary family member, Dick Johnson, helps pull weeds and helps me water and take care of things. So we're very proud of this distinction, and we're trying to do everything we can. We're proud of our city.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have a presentation about the Cape Splash Pump House restoration recognition, and I'm sure we have people here who are involved in that. So Julia?
Yes. Well, in February, we had a very unexpected occasion happen. And of course, right when you're preparing for the summer, there's usually months of preparation that go into that under normal circumstances. So there was an unusual sighting. I want to recognize a number of people that officially saw what happened, helped address what happened, and then got us to this point. So when I call your name, please stand. So we have Rick Ennis, our fire chief. Rick was the one that was traveling on King's Highway that morning and saw smoke coming out of the pump house and thought it was unusual. And he was able to call it in for us, and the fire crews were able to get there quickly. It had already done most of the damage, but it was through his quick action that they were able to get in there and take care of that. So our own staff, Penny Williams, our Recreation Division Manager, Lynn Morton, our Maintenance Facility Manager, Stephanie Beeler is our Aquatic Supervisor. She's at Swim Lessons tonight, so she's not here, but played a critical role. Lori Meyer and Carrie Bergfeld, HR and Risk Management. Phil Penzel, CEO of Penzel Construction. Clay Randall, his project manager for the restoration of the project. Bill Tally, WWE Walker-Laken is our insurance broker. I don't know if he can make it this evening. And then Brandy Cummins is his assistant. Luke Ederling is the Claims Director for Chubbs, and Robert Kuzinski from Chubbs North Americas, our Liability Insurance Claim Specialist. And we have Dave Wyker from, all the way from Creepole, came from St. Louis area, right, to come be here this evening. And then we have Lance Trainicker with Dryer Electric. And then I'd like to recognize also, don't sit down while, Cape Police Department for their diligence, because through their efforts, Wes and your team, we were able to arrest the suspect, and he is now undergoing litigation with this. But as you can see, it takes an amazing team to not only run a facility, but when a major catastrophe happens that shuts down all of your pump systems and burns up all of your equipment, the amount of communication and coordination, not to mention in a very, very short timeframe, all of these folks were able to communicate what was needed, change their work schedules, get more work done to get us all ready to be open May 1st. And so I want to just give a really, I'm very proud of all this team, because you don't operate normally under situations like this. You have to kind of forego your normal procedures, and everybody has to be willing to work through what sometimes are snags to getting things done, large purchases of equipment, large coordinations of schedule. So I'm super grateful for this team to be able to put together one of our best grand opening days ever. That leads me to the next portion, y'all. So the best thing is that we had amazing weather for this Memorial Weekend. And not only did we benefit from that, Cape Splash had one of its best opening weekends ever, where we brought in about $33,700 for that day. It's one of our tops. The last couple of years, the weather hasn't been that spectacular, but it was a very amazing weekend. Thanks to all of these folks, it would not have been possible. So all of our residents and visitors that came were really able to enjoy a beautiful facility, and they didn't even know the difference. They didn't even know what all had transpired behind the scenes. But it's to these folks that we owe a big round of applause and thank you, that we really didn't miss a beat. So we really appreciate that.
Julia, I'd like you all to have everybody come down that was involved, and let's get a group photo for our webpage and such. So everybody that was involved, it was night, come on down. I will say, on behalf of my grandchildren...
Come on over here. Lie up here. Half of my grandchildren, children of the city, and teenagers, and all the residents of the city of Splash. It would have been the same. She's going to take photos, so everybody has to see her. Face that way. There her goes.
Big smiles.
All right. Anybody on the city council have anything to report or want to communicate tonight?
The...
Staff, go ahead.
The march on Saturday was really, really, really good. The turnout was nice, and we did walk a long way.
It was long.
It was long. And, but it was really good. So we want you all to continue to come and support it and be aware that though we are there marching in there, trying to make sure that deaths are not, lives are not being taken due to violence, it needs a lot of support, a lot of support. So just come out next year, maybe you'll get a chance to come out and march with us in that hot sun, enjoy the festivities, but we had a good time.
Anybody else? I will mention that the seniors and law enforcement together had a memorial last week. It was extremely well attended. The message was, they had a new video that was quite moving, and the ceremony honored the families of the fallen officers. For those of you who aren't aware, we honor 49 fallen officers in the southeast Missouri area, basically Troop E's area of the Highway Patrol. And I encourage if you can't make, if you didn't make it this year, it's annual, and look out for it next year, and you'll be moved. So that's all I have. Staff?
I think we're taking care of them.
Taking care of them. All right. Items for discussion. I think we already covered that, didn't we?
We already covered that. You're ready for regular session?
All right. So we'll call this regular session of the city council to order. Roll call, please.
Ryan Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox is absent. Robbie Gard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Dan Preston.
All right. Dan, I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Gard, seconded by Ms. Shelley. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Agenda is adopted. Public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding temporary uses, Bill Number 18-81, which is our agenda item number eight. Is there anybody here in the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody on this proposed amendment to Chapter 30? Seeing none, we just move ahead and throw it on there?
Go ahead. Yes.
Okay. Council, Bill Number 18-81 is agenda item number eight. Do I hear a motion?
You need to read it.
Oh, yes, I do. Excuse me, I'm the temporary mayor. An ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding temporary uses, first reading. Now, we have a motion from Robbie Gard.
Second.
Yeah, the second, Mr. ... Yes. Preston. Got it. Okay. Any discussion?
So Scott, this doesn't change anything except the length of time?
Right. It allows us to allow the temporary activity to happen for multiple months rather than just one single month.
No.
It's a convenient thing, and keeps them happy to come back in. Really, really applies real well for seasonal type of things like fruit stands and things like that. But they could do it one at a time if they wanted to.
And when they apply for, say, multiple months, that's just stated from the get-go with a start and stop time, or?
Yeah, I think so. Alex?
Yeah. Really, it came from, according to the code language, it was only allowed that 30 days. We thought something like so, it only made sense to allow them.
So previously, they had to reapply every 30 days for that temporary use?
According to our language, they could only do it for 12 months.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have another public hearing to consider the proposed annual operating budget for the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, Bill Number 1882, agenda item number nine. This is the first reading of the budget. Does anybody in the public wish to speak about the budget?
Mayor, we've asked some of our partners to come tonight and to just give a quick one or two minutes on what the funds that the budget funds their agency to do, just to share with you what they do with their. So I was going to ask them to come forward at one at a time and cover that. So, Mayor wants to go first? John rather do the short story.
Good evening, everybody. Whoops. Pleasure to be here, and I'm going to actually wear two hats, do both Magnet and Cape Girardeau Convention and Visitors Bureau. So first, Magnet, the city contributes approximately $67,000 annually to the Cape Girardeau area Magnet, one of the five funders to the organization. The other includes Cape Girardeau County, City of Jackson, the Chamber, and the City of Scott City is back in to the Magnet organization, which is good. The Cape Chamber conducts the operations of Magnet under a contract with the organization's Board of Directors. Mission of Magnet is to foster a strong economic environment resulting in retention, expansion, creation, and attraction of jobs and new investment in the area. We do so in many ways, including existing business visits, site selector visits, newsletters, direct mail, working closely with Missouri Partnership and the Department of Economic Development, and all the organizations that are charged to do this in the state of Missouri. Magnet's been an extremely successful regional economic development effort. I did bring a little bit of information on an upcoming event for you to take a look at. This is our Lakeside at the Locators. It's an annual event that we participate in. It puts several of the leading Missouri communities in a two-and-a-half-day meeting session with 10 site selectors from across the nation and gets us into a situation where we have an opportunity to build relationships and strengthen relationships. So I've given you, provided you with both a copy of last year's agenda as well as a list of this year's attendees for you to take a look at. Would also like to mention that Magnet does have an additional full-time staff dedicated directly to the organization, and that's Janice Boss, who many of you know. Janice does a great job working with us and working on those particular activities. Questions on Magnet? All right. Change hats. Cape Girardeau Convention and Visitors Bureau, this year's budget request is $694,632 from the City of Cape. In addition, there is another possibility of $50,000, which has been provided in the last couple of years, for special event incentives, one-time things, really came into being with the Sportsplex opening, and we're able to use this to attract special events for the first time. Some of the other money is used as incentive money as well. CBB is under the direction of Brenda Newbern, has a team of Elisa Ferris, Benny Roth, and the Bold Marketing Group doing a lot of things for us. CBB spends 100% of its time marketing Cape Girardeau, almost exclusively externally. So you don't see a lot of the efforts here locally, because obviously, we're trying to bring outside people into the city of Cape to make a difference. Results of this group are strong and getting stronger. You see the hotel motel restaurant tax numbers on a monthly basis. We have those as well and understand and are able to follow what's going on there. Would like to add that we work very closely with Parks and Rec, Julia's people, especially with the sporting event things and tournament things, which are huge for our area, huge impact for our area. And I love the working relationship we have going now. It is improved. We also work very closely with Nicolette and her folks in delivering the messages, and of course, with Old Town Cape as well on the special events. Our budget comes solely now from the hotel motel part of the hotel motel restaurant tax under the latest agreement with Mid-America, and we are limited every year to a maximum increase of 3% in our overall budget, regardless of what happens with the hotel motel receipts. I have brought a couple of things for you to look at, because again, a lot of times you don't go shopping within your own city for tourist information. So I've brought you both a visitor's guide and a tour planner quick reference guide. I do want to add a real quick point. I know I'm probably pushing my two minutes. Brenda's not here tonight because she is with the Missouri Association of CBB Conference, which is being held in Cape Girardeau. People started coming in last night, and they're here through Wednesday about midday. That's one of four conferences we are having here in 2018, before the end of the year, that we otherwise would not have gotten without the addition of the Drury Plaza Hotel and Conference Center. We'll soon be hosting Leadership Missouri for one of their sessions. We'll be hosting the Chamber Executives of Missouri for their annual conference, and the Missouri Economic Development Council for their annual conference. So another one yet to come in September, and two more in October. And so when we believed and thought we could compete for statewide groups, we in fact have been competing very well. So let me give you these, and I'll take any questions you may ask.
Is this the first time the Convention and Visitors have been here?
Yes.
For a meeting? Yeah.
And this will be the first time for MEDC. This will be the first time for CCEM since 1994. So some significant, significant acts.
The budget again was?
For CBB?
Right at 700.
In Socrata, it looks like it was totaled for us to $744,000.
Yeah, that's because we funded the $50,000 incentives.
Yeah, we don't, with the budget and the $50,000, we still don't get to the total motel tax, but that's then in an account that's still spent on those kinds of purposes.
Right.
Questions?
But that all comes out of the motel tax, which is the 4% on hotel motel.
Oh, this is probably a busy time of year, but it would be nice, and I think probably at some point as a council to have Brenda come in and talk about her and her staff. And this is the wrong time of year, because it's vacation season, but maybe in the third or fourth quarter, we'll have her, ask her to come in and kind of talk about, you know, how the year was and what it looks like in her world.
Absolutely. And we do that certainly on Magnet and the others, so that's, we'd love to.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Marla Mills, Old Town Cape.
Thank you for having me. For the new council, we do come every year and give a kind of an update of what's going on, and we've done that, a kind of a more in-depth update. But just as a reminder, Old Town Cape is a not-for-profit, independent, volunteer-driven organization, speaking of volunteers. I have some board members to understand, and the audience, there are three of you here, and we have a city representative on the board, as well as Shelley representing the council. We are a community-directed organization, and basically, we work to revitalize and develop downtown Cape Girardeau specifically. So we work under the National Main Street, National Main Street Center, which is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Their model of revitalization called, just called Main Street, and it's a four-point approach, covering design, which develops the space of downtown, it's where historic preservation falls, and, but placemaking and all of the other areas, promotion, which develops the customers of downtown, economic development develops the business of downtown. We have a separate committee, as Councilman Preston knows, who's on this committee, Economic Vitality, and organization develops the resources of the organization and really helps make sure that this organization plays to focus on this. And all of those areas are, again, kind of stacked by volunteers and that bring forth the work that we do. We, as, with our contract with the city, specifically, it says, "Our contract calls for us to coordinate Cape Girardeau's downtown revitalization effort." So that is what we do. We do it under this Main Street model. We are a liaison under this contract with the city. We're a liaison to the city for downtown, on projects for downtown, issues concerned, anything that affects downtown, we act as that liaison. And we help promote the downtown, where John was talking about, visit Cape almost exclusively markets outside of downtown. We actually promote Cape Girardeau specifically downtown, locally and regionally, and, you know, promote people coming down into Cape Girardeau or into the downtown area. We work, obviously, with the city on all of those, Nicolette and the Public Information Group, the Chamber, visit Cape, both on the promotion and the development side of that. So we, I think, work really well and in tandem with all of the other groups that work in development and promotion of the community. And I will be happy to answer any specific questions that you might have about what we do and how we do it.
Counsel?
What is the requested amount for 2000, for this fiscal year?
Our contract, our contract is with, our contract calls for us to get the, there's a percentage amount in the Riverfront Fund that is set up for administrative purposes, and that's, we get that percentage. So it varies from year to year, and the exact amount will be what the, and, if we're going to answer this better, but the exact amount is based on last year's revenues from the...
John? It's a little over 100,000.
117, I'm not sure. Okay.
And where does that, John, where does that, as far as expenses, where is that coming out of? Is it administrative or?
It's out of the Riverfront Fund.
Correct. Okay. So it's in development? All right. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Marla.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name's Kelly Watson. I'm with Cape Girardeau County Transit Authority. Normally you would have Tom Mogle here in front of you, but he is unavailable due to a prior commitment, so you get me tonight. Just wanted to start off by thanking you for our support, the support you've given us in the past and hope that that's a continuing thing for us. I believe in the past we've received in the neighborhood of $110,000, which goes towards the city bus, the fixed route from the city bus. We also do provide the demand response services. A lot of people refer to those as taxi cab services. And we also operate the trolley for the downtown area now. Ridership numbers for this year, year-to-date are up by about five, approximately 5,000 riders so far. I have a hand, I actually have a couple of handouts here.
Come on, each.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So one of, one of the handouts that we've got is just lists the different categories of ridership that we have and the totals that we have for each month. Also shows the mileage that we put on our vehicles. Last year, we divided over 200,000 trips for people in Cape Girardeau homes. And so far this year, in five months' time, we put 600,000 miles on our vehicles. So the money that you have provided us with goes to provide the local match. What I do at Cape County Transit, I'm the accounting manager, so I deal with the grant writing and a lot of the finance issues. And all of our grants that we receive through either MoDOT or directly from FTA require a local match portion and that is where the money that we receive from the city of Cape Girardeau goes to. Another one of the handouts that I gave you gives you numbers by month for the new trolley service downtown. This is a new program and we are hoping to see increases in ridership as more people learn about it. We believe that with the opening of the new hotel downtown that we will see more numbers for ridership. And the service is now a hop-on, hop-off service. There are no designated bus stops. Anyone can just flag us down and get on the bus and ride to any of the locations that we serve in the downtown area. And right now, we are seeing most of our riders going from the downtown area to the casino. That's what I've been told. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I will do my best to answer.
You said year-to-date, up 5%?
5,000 riders, year-to-date. Ridership has increased by 5,000 for last year.
Anybody else?
Thank you for providing us the numbers that you've been providing that have been very helpful to keep us up to date on what's going on and doing this. So we appreciate your work particularly for doing that.
Okay, thank you. If there's any other questions, call us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Charlotte Craig and I'm old enough to tell you that, that I was on the committee that assessed the need for the County Transit Authority 100 years ago. It is kind of wonderful to see it have come to fruition. And I, and I have to say, Mr. Gunn, I, I totally agree with you. The memorial service to our fallen policemen is quite moving. I had to miss it this year and I was very sorry that I had to miss it. It, it really is a moving experience and I'm, I'm, I'm like him, anybody that can attend it should. It's remarkable. It really is. So Tracy, come on up, honey. We're gonna cope, present, I'm gonna tell a little bit about programs. Tracy's gonna, Tracy is our director, Tracy Poston, and she's gonna do some statistics for you. And I think it might flow better if we do the statistics first and then we'll go into some of the programs that we do. And I promise I won't get hung up and talked forever. I promise.
So we just wanted to give you a little background, just kind of interesting facts. And I started with 2014 and in that, in that year, we took in a total of 3,685 animals. Of those animals, 300, well, 1,380 were all from the city of Cape and 316 of them came directly from the animal control officer and 423 came from the citizens that were strays. So these were not, when our surrenders, they were strays, members had picked up. In 2015, we took in 3,509 animals. Of those animals, 1,194 were from the city of Cape. Animal control was 326 and strays were 290. 2016, numbers went down a little bit, 3,150, 1,119 were from the city of Cape and 352 were from animal control, 276 were strays from members of the city. And in 2017, we saw a decrease again where we took in 2,740 animals. 748 of those were from the city and 195 of them were from animal control, 151 were strays. Moving into this year, we're at 1,190, 252 from Cape, 69 from animal control and 83 that were strays. I just find it interesting that, you know, we've worked really hard to offer last year $22,000 in free vouchers for spay and neuter. We've done, you know, some changing of how we're becoming part of the city by offering some help with behaviors and how you can keep your pet and being a resource for the pet owners in the area in that way. And I think, you know, over time we've, you know, seen that the numbers decreased because of the programs that we have in the community to help that happen. So.
And I, I agree with that. Pushing spay and neuter has helped to decrease the numbers. Some of the programs that the, this is not the shelter that started out in 1977. We have come leap years. We are now at a point where we can say that for dogs, the definition of a no-kill shelter is that 90% of your dogs are your animals. You have a live release rate. A live release rate is either adoption, return to owner, or go into rescue. And so there are times when we are past 90% for dogs and that's remarkable. Back in the eighties, it was, I, I can say that it was just about a slaughterhouse. You know, we just, we, we would euthanize animals because we just did not have the room to put them in. So with pushing spay and neuter, both with cats and dogs and with some of the innovation and joining this century with ideas and thinking outside of the box, as Tracy said, to, to work with an individual that wants to surrender an animal and to find out why and is there some, is there some intervention that we can handle that will keep that from happening? Our, our favorite program is Puppies for Pro. I sometimes get very moved when I talk about that program. It is using offenders and we use, we work with Petosi and Bonter Prison. At Petosi, our trainer offenders are either on death row or they're in prison life without parole. We have about 30 to 32 trainers who have worked with a certified dog trainer and they're taught their basic canine manners, sit, stay, heel, potty train, you name it. Tracy picks dogs that would be difficult to place ordinarily and puts them in this program. We have between the two, no, with just Petosi, we have take, we've sent in over 200 dogs at this point. And that is another reason why the adoption rate is up. This is a remarkable program and sometime I could do an entire presentation on that program. It, it helps not only get our dogs adopted, but it has changed, we are told by the prison officials, it's changed the culture inside the prison as well as given the offenders something to hang on to and to look forward to. Based on that successful program, we have a local program that probation and pro, the 22nd District Probation and Pro officers work with us, partner with us and the Family Counseling Center. And young women who are on probation and pro come out every Thursday morning and spend an hour to an hour and a half with our animals, totally volunteer, no community service hours are given, no credit is given. They're there because they want to be there and work with our animals. We are told by probation and pro, this has made a, an impact on these young women. They are seeing a commitment that we're, we're into this probably three, maybe four, maybe four years now. And it's, it, it, they are seeing individuals maintaining a commitment that they didn't see before. They're, they're extremely pleased with the program. We are too. Sometime when school session is in, I invite you out on a Wednesday morning with Prodigy students, Prodigy School. Third and fourth graders come out and read to our animals, cats and dogs. If any of you have ever been out to shelter, you know it is total chaos when you walk back into the dogs. You cannot talk. You cannot, you, you cannot have a conversation. When these children, Tracy wanted to do this, one of the teachers called and said, "Let's do this." I said, "Honey, it will never work. It won't work. We don't have the space. It just won't work." She said she wanted to try it. When those kids come out, and I've got pictures, they, they bring a towel and they sit it down on that concrete floor and they open up a book and they start reading and the barking almost that one by one by one, it stops. You can hear a pin drop in that kennel. I kid you not. It, it is, it's something to see. Come out some Wednesday morning when school's back in session. The cats, generally speaking, if you know cats at all, they're shy, they don't want to have much to do with people. I've got pictures of children reading to the cats and the cats paws are out and, and tapping the kids on the shoulder. It gives the children reading skills, socialization skills and then builds their confidence and it helps to socialize our animals and make them more adoptable. You may or may not know that we are part of the disaster response team if there's an emergency such as the two floods back in 2011 and then whatever year, what year did the, was the levee breach? Whatever year that was and the flooding occurred that with the city of Cape Girardeau and this lovely young lady here, Arena Park lets us use the 4-H building and we house animals, not just from the Cape, actually Cape Girardeau citizens have not needed, thank goodness, to, to use that service yet. There've been other areas in southeast Missouri. And the Cape Girardeau County Public Health Center has the equipment, the sheltering supplies. You all provide the sheltering facility and the Humane Society provides the staffing through the volunteers and our staff. We have a military program we call Buddies for the Brave where adoption fees are either waived or significantly reduced. We also work with the Women's Safe House. And if you are familiar with domestic violence and all, a woman will a lot of times not leave her home because the spouse threatens to hurt the family pet if she does so. Well, guess what? If she leaves and brings her pets and they call us, we do the foster program. I personally kept cats for six months for an individual. That's, I, that's stretching it, that's Charlotte. But we do, we do tell the girls that for 30 days, at least 30 days, and then it's a case-by-case basis. And I'm almost none. We do humane education. We, and we've already told you that we spay and neuter animals. We have a benefactor, a sponsor who helps Tracy plan the free vouchers once a year. Each year we give over 300 vouchers for a free spay and neuter. And then in addition to that, we have SNAP Spay-Neuter Assistance Program and it's income-based. And if you qualify, then you, for $25 or $35, you can spay or neuter your cat or dog and we provide foster homes. And we have a volunteer program. Are there any questions? Sorry. Can I, can I answer any questions? I think that this Humane Society of Southeast Missouri is a community asset. I still work as a public health nurse. I was the director of the Health Department. I can tell you that when we take the number of strays off, off your street in any of, any of the jurisdictions that we work with, we are improving the public's health. We are reducing the significance of disease that animals carry as well as dog bites and I'm very proud to be a part of it and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Richford, where does that, where does that contribution to them, where does that flow through?
Health fund.
Yeah, public safety and the health.
That's 60,000, ain't it?
Yeah.
Hey, I have one program, it's not a program, but we're gonna be bringing individuals to the city too. We're gonna have a pet expo, first ever. And we think it's gonna be a hit and will grow and all of the counties in Missouri is being invited to bring their animals and themselves to student learning at the Osage Center. And I think that's gonna grow and that will bring this year.
And that's gonna bring vendors and stuff together, Charlotte?
Yes. Food, food trucks and vendors, veterinarians will make presentations on health issues. That's this year. We, there's not one like this between Memphis and St. Louis. There may not be one in Memphis. There is one in St. Louis and that's where Tracy kept the idea. It's huge and I think this one will end up in St. Louis.
Very other agencies we, we'd like to come. I have a couple of other things just like to point out regarding the budget during the hearing. One of them is, we, in one of our sessions, we talked about upgrading our loggers for our employees while they're not getting a raise this year. We are upgrading their loggers to be more competitive with the surrounding local agencies. We're not gonna be able to go all the way to the 2% for life like the others, but we are gonna go halfway to the 2% when, at the retirement age and then 1.75% times your years of service for, for the, after 65. One of the things that we pointed out when we were talking about it was, I think John was showing on Secroda, the, the big jump in the administrative cost and that was the one-time cost associated with that. We hadn't talked a lot about that. The ongoing costs are a little over $100,000, I believe. If you ever take, I think it's a little 111 or something like that. So that's not very, that wasn't a whole lot, although, you know, it's still a significant amount, but that's one time forever. The only reason that number is so low is because in talking to council over the last few years, we've been agreeable to the one-time cost, which is the significant amount in this, but that's what buys down those legacy costs so that we only have the smaller one-time cost. And that has bounced to four and a half million dollars that is one-time cost. So we have allocated that from our unallocated casino funds, from our estimated, a little bit from the legacy funds. We'll borrow that, we'll pay that back and that's 35,000 for that. Then we have our fringe benefit fund. We've had a few good years and so we've been able to build up that balance to the point where we were comfortable spending that down, about $750,000. And then also our general fund, unassigned general fund balance was high enough to where we felt like we could spin that back down to two and a half million, which is kind of where our comfort level is. And so if you add those together along with the enterprise funds, each enterprise fund has its own fund, we sort of take, we have to take out of those fringe benefit funds and funds, the ability to pay off the enterprises, that's how we come up with that one-time fund. So while employees may feel like we haven't invested in being able to give them a raise, we, maybe council's making a huge investment in buying this legacy cost down so that we can afford this upgrade to halfway. Yes, we'd like to be able to do both, but this is one of the things. We talked about how we were, we're kind of more one-time cost, you know, flush and have more money available there. And on reoccurring costs, we are just in a, continue to be in almost crisis mode with that because that, that, our ongoing costs just are not growing. Another, another item that was asked about is.
Scott, I'm sorry. Before you move on?
Yes.
I just asked, and then there, there may be different answers for all of these different things, but generally, how long has it taken for these amounts to build to the, you know, to where you're seeing some surpluses? Is it a couple of years or?
John would say two, three years, build up those. John would say two, three years, build up those.
And the, the unassigned general fund balance, that surplus, is that, is that then, that expense then bring it down to what? Is it like 15% the figure you're comfortable, is that kind of where we want to keep that? Is that what I'm, am I thinking correctly about that? Yes, this is a separate thing. Okay, I was confusing those two.
And our, and our goal in that has always been to be between two and three million. And so two and a half is kind of right in that center. We've never set a policy on a percentage basis or anything, we just have kind of agreed that two, between two and three million is where we want to be on, on unallocated fund balance.
And this brings that down to two and a half?
Okay.
Any questions on that?
In the casino fund, the two and a half, the two to three million in casino, correct? Estimated unallocated casino revenue?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what's coming out of the allocated casino is 2.4.
But then the estimated end of the year unrestricted fund balance, we want it to be between 200.
Yes.
And the general fund, then this year we're going to have 3.5, but some of that's locked in because of health and convention and visitors, correct?
I'm not sure on that.
I'm just looking at. That's fine, I mean, I.
I'll, I'll try to get with you afterwards and answer that one, John will. Never cheat. The other thing we did, and I was asked to do is to look at our, is to go a little bit of a discussion about going through the budget process and kind of some of the things that we cut to get down, because we've talked a lot about, we, you know, we build in 2% raise for employees, and that's one of the things that got cut, that's, that's part of it, that's, we first cut 1% and then we cut the second percent, which is about 100, out of the general fund is about $180,000. Our initial deficit was almost 600,000, it was 577,000. And then we worked through that, I just, some of the examples we have of things we cut was, we reduced the food for council meeting, eliminated that. Travel, education and training, a lot of education and training was reduced out of our budget. That's one that we are, aren't, you know, comfortable staying that way forever. But in order to balance, we, we took a lot of that out of almost every single organization. We took some about a creative and tech budget, our outside legal fees we reduced, we reduced some job analysis consulting that we do, interpreter service, service award that we, that we purchased. We did reduce a full-time transportation land use plan or position that we've outsourced part of that work, and so we reduced that one totally. More training and travel, we reduced our prisoner food, protective attire, chemicals, costs associated with some additional sweeping, limb pickup, office supplies, street supplies, equipment and vehicle rent. So we had some, we done vehicle rents in some other places, so we're going to try to just share some equipment and reduce that significantly. Some small equipment, some events, and then building supplies. So just say, you know, we didn't just take out just salaries. And then the last thing I have for you is on your sheet, we share, this is, this is our budget, if you look at it, from what do we do every week? We took activities that we do every week on average, and so a department looked at it and said, okay, if I do a, if I do 500 of these a year, then that means I do about 10 of them a week. So these aren't audited numbers, these are kind of round numbers, but it gives you a pretty good feel for these are the, those activities that we are doing every week to serve citizens. And you can look on there and see that. Then the size of the color represents the amount of budget that goes to doing those activities. So the 75 million dollar budget, that's the size of that, you can see the, on the far right there, the orange and brown is what I see. I'm kind of half colorblind, but you can see that's the biggest portion of our budget goes to public works and those enterprise funds that they, that they operate. Then they produce a lot of things, and so you get to see that as well. So I thought this is a pretty good representation of just those kind of invisible everyday things that city services provide. We talked, I know in our initial council retreat, we talked about the five goals of council, and that's kind of the things that we're, we're working on to improve in and to, to do better in. And so we spent a lot of time talking about what each department was doing to improve in those five areas. And we laid that out for you, and so that was part of our strategy of those areas. Then, but we didn't talk about, this is, this is all the stuff we do and we do those things. That's the stuff we do on top of, of just those things. So I'm not going to go through it with you, but it's, it's a pretty good place mat to just kind of see what the city does. And a lot of things I think you'll see that are kind of go unnoticed. But if they weren't there, I guarantee you that somebody would notice really, really quick if, when they flushed the toilet, it didn't go down. Or if the trash didn't get picked up, the streets weren't repaired, when they called the police, they didn't come. If, when their house caught on fire or they had a medical emergency, there was no one to come. It would be a big deal right then, which is kind of a neat thing. We're kind of that invisible service that just does her job, but this tries to capture that a little bit for you. So that's mayor, all I got for the budget hearing, if there's any more, we'll.
And this is complete now?
Pardon me?
This is complete?
Yes, we just completed it, so there, I'm not saying that there isn't a, an occasional misspelled word or something on it, but.
And I would recommend that this go on our website.
Yes.
And it's a great visual aid. You can't read the small print, but if you pick out each and every item on here, it tells you a, something that's happening in the city of Cape Girardeau. I'm just going to point with my finger and pick one. 87,500 pounds of recyclables picked up in the city each week, every week. Picking another one. Newsense abatement calls for service per week, 147. If you look at this, you'll see every department has something going on that is most citizens consider essential. And so I hope we get this on the website, I encourage everybody to look at it, it's a good visual for what the city does. Is there anyone else here for the public hearing on the budget? Seeing none, I would entertain, we're going to go ahead and take this first. So I would entertain a motion for the first reading of the budget, which I will read now. That's item number nine under new ordinances, bill number 1882, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, first reading. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Some move? Mr. Asic? Second, seconded by guard, any discussion?
I'd just add one thing, mayor. I think I've enjoyed the budget process this year, it's been different than we have done it in years past. We've been able to look at and discuss what our shortfalls are in the general fund. I think in the next three, four, in the near future, you know, we, I think we need to come back and have a study session on, is it, where, where, where are we going to make up that shortfall in a, in a flat sales tax environment? Is it, is it person, is it cutting back personnel? Is it cutting back services? Is it passing a use tax? What, what are those things? But I'm, I'm, I know that we've got to do that. I don't think we're to the point this year where we would want to make drastic cuts this year, coming out of what we were able to do last year, coupled with the fact, granted, we are using some one-time funds for loggers, for the loggers upgrade, but that still is a benefit to our employees. So that to me is the silver lining. One thing that did come out of this for me is that I really want to, I want us to really look at as a council and ask God on what merit-based pay would look like for our employees. And really educating with Ms. Meyer and HR on, on what that really will look like. And to, as, you know, the health. We've got, you know, people across the board that know that they're being looked at and judge the way a lot of us in, outside of the government world are looked at. So like the process, not, not, not a great story to tell, but still there are some silver linings. So I appreciate John, he already leave?
No, he's back there.
I appreciate John in finance department. Socrata is a lot of help in, in digging into that, and so just want to say kudos. I know that he would rather have his 140 pages instead of the Socrata, but it's helpful to us council members, so.
And we have both.
That's all I would add, mayor.
Anybody else?
Scott, I was hoping you could, I really appreciated our conversation that we had last week, and particularly, you're kind of explaining to me, you're, the whole tone, the process. Especially you, you talked about, I was hoping you could share a little bit here of just about when you first started here, kind of the, I guess, the attitude or the way things were, were spent, and compare that to now. It seems like you have a, a very conservative financial approach, which is, which I, seems solid.
Sure, I'll be glad to share that, thank you for the opportunity. Basically, I shared that I came in 2009, and if you were around in 2009, and, and if you had any money in the, in the stock market, or if you were, had any, any investments, or if you were trying to find a job, you won't ever forget those times because it was very dire financial times. And, and the, and the, the city had just come out of some, some difficult times, but, and our, our fund balance at the time, I believe was less than a half a million dollars. And we had just spent, we had a job study and had spent some money on reoccurring costs. And so we were, we were really, really tight then, and, and we had had some things come up that really made us really go through a difficult time of really looking at every single thing very close. And spending of reoccurring revenue in particular became a, just something that I couldn't with good conscience do unless we had the revenue solid that it was going to happen. So I could, I couldn't, you know, what I, what I came out of that was just an absolute, it's almost unethical to spend, to spend money that's got to be reoccurring, that you have to have every year without having enough revenue to cover all of that expense that we're going to have every year. You know, it'd be like, you know, we compared it to spending your Christmas money to make your first car payment for, that you're going to have for 60 months. You know, that's just not good, good, that's, that's not good financial policy. And so that's where I came out of it, is this, I, you know, is I, I won't allow our city to get in that, that case. And that's where we established, began to establish, well, what should our unallocated fund balance be? Two to three million, we won't move off that. Now, yeah, we might, if we had a special thing came up, I mean, it's there for, to give you some flexibility. So it might dip below, but then we get right back up to over 2 million if we possibly can, because that, with the size of our budget, that's the type of thing we need. I watched, I watched Joplin go through a deal where they had their, had, had their, their tornado immediately. They had, they had huge generated rev, general, general revenue drivers that didn't, didn't draw a dime then for, for a couple of years. They had to figure out how to deal with that. If they, you know, they, their emergency fund is, is one way to deal with it, but you also have to have that healthy unallocated fund balance. We learned their lessons, we tried, we learned our own lessons coming out of that, and try, that's how we've tried to establish fiscal policy. And John had a real strong conservative fiscal policy, I'm not saying he didn't, but, but come out, but what I came to, it really reinforced that his policies were right and that we needed to be really diligent on that. It's a lot easier to next year say, you know what? We weren't, that, that reoccurring revenue wasn't as flat as we thought it was, we've got some room now, and so we can, we can do something with confidence, than to say, well, you know, we, we hope that gets better. You know, when the numbers just don't say that, we just, we just can't do it. And there's nobody, our, the department had a team that gets, gathers together on Tuesday mornings after meeting on Monday. We sat around and looked and looked and, you know, they, they talked about, well, we'll give up our raise, we'll do, you know, they were committed to this idea of some way finding a way for the raise, but ultimately without that reoccurring revenue that says this is a safe thing to do, we couldn't do it. And we wish we could, but I don't know if that addresses.
Yeah, very much so, yeah.
The only thing I can think of that I didn't say is that, that when we go through this line by line, John and I sit down with every department head, we go through their budgets line by line and go through it, and some of the things, the, the data tells us, we've got to raise that line. It's utilities, we're going to have utilities, we can't lie to ourselves and say, no, that's not, you know, it's not a trend to do, to grow by 3%. We can't not do 3%, that's, that's irresponsible again. So, so, so some of the things, yes, we had to add, so that, what that meant was, we had to cut even more than that, that, what was it? Was it in $677,000 that we were already trying to get? That made it more, so every line was like that, but we go line by line with them. And, and they're, and they're committed, I mean, a lot of that stuff, a lot of places, they would have had a whole lot more to cut because their department heads would have just said everything they want. Well, John visits with us way early on with his projections and says, hey, it's going to be thin this year. Our department heads bring in a thin budget already, they don't bring in any kind of, you know, wasteful spend, not wasteful, but just extra if they know that we're not going to have extra, they're just good conscientious people, so I don't know if that helps.
It does, and, and that coupled with hearing more and more, you know, the, the kind of, the more dire predictions for the, the sales tax receipt, you know, situation, kind of creates a better understanding of. Why we're having to.
If you look at the growth in sales tax in the last two, I can remember, less than 1% growth. Well, that's, that's in a retail market that is growing at, you know, nationally over the last eight, nine years, averaging over almost 5%, it's four and a half percent plus growth. And our sales tax is only in the last two years grown less than 1%. You know, there's things going on here and it's looking much more like that that's the trend, that the, the two years ago, less than 1% growth wasn't an anomaly. So if we get a third year on that, we, and that's what we're scared of, and it is dire, because if you don't get any growth, that means you can't, I mean, most of our costs are, are personnel costs. And, and we know there's going to be pressure on what, medical, comp, comp, you know, workman's comp, those, those things are growing, even in, you know, we've been lucky to control a lot of those costs, but people are jealous of our control because we've had single-digit increases instead of double-digit increases in those things. That's from a hard, a lot of hard work. And maybe I should spend more time going on and on about how our, our department has worked so hard to, to, to deal with that. And our employees themselves, they, you know, we explain it to them, the more you use the, you know, we're self-insured, we're self-insured medical plan, the more you run to the doctor and, and, you know, and, and spend on it, you know, that's just going to make our costs go up. And they respond to that, you know, it's, it's, they're amazing people.
Anybody else? I'd like to point out that when we talk about the budget and we mention all these things that are expected, the people that are doing these jobs are paid out of general revenue, which is sales tax. It's not a dedicated tax such as wastewater, storms, fire and police that go to projects and ongoing buildings and things. These are the people who maintain those and who respond to calls for service, be it in whatever department we're talking about. And if the sales tax revenue, which we've all seen is going down, 1%, but it's going down and there are numerous factors we've looked at to discuss why that's happening. The end result is, we've talked about this year, we can't provide a raise because of the things you've mentioned. We want to provide a raise. We've discussed providing a raise. We wanted to do the loggers and we got the loggers done. That's important for the welfare of the, and retirement of our, future retirement of our workers. But what the citizens need to understand is that the sales tax is what pays for these people who provide all of these services. And we have to educate the public and ourselves better come up with enough general revenue. We'll be discussing as time goes by, ways to do that and sharing it with the public. But I wanted the people who are listening to understand, we're not talking about a dedicated tax per se that's building a building or providing stormwater improvements or improving your streets. These were taxpayer-approved items. We took it to the public and they said, yes, we want these things and we are providing those, but we still have to have the people to do that. They're our most valuable asset and we'll be working on that as time goes by. We've got a good handle on the budget this year, better than I've had in the past as to each thing that's happening and where the money comes from. You might say we've had budgeting 101. John did a good job of providing that to us. But I just wanted to take that moment to, to explain to the public that these things are ongoing and we will be addressing them. This is the first reading of the budget and at this time I'll ask if there's a motion to pass the budget. Oh, we already did that. We're in discussion, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we still have an agenda and we still have people who are, are possible if they want to talk to us about, have a public discussion on items on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience have anything that they want to talk about that we haven't discussed already? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. First.
I mean, sorry. Bill 1876, an ordinance approving the record plat of Robert Davis subdivision. Bill 1876, an ordinance approving the record plat of Robert Davis subdivision. Bill 1877, ordinance approving the record plat of Regent's Park Phase 2. Bill 1877, an ordinance approving the record plat of Regent's Park Phase 2. Bill 1878, ordinance appropriating funds for the economic development expenditures pursuant to redevelopment agreement with the Old Town Cape Historic Landmark Preservation Group, LLC in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 1878, an ordinance appropriating funds for economic development expenditures pursuant to redevelopment agreement with the Old Town Cape Historic Landmark Preservation Group, LLC in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
And as previously mentioned, Councilman and guard will abstain from numbers five and six. Do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Okay, I have a second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, new ordinances minus numbers eight and nine. Number seven, bill number 1880, an ordinance establishing utility rates for the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by amending chapter 22 relating to solid waste fees and chapter 29 relating to water rates. First reading, do I have a motion?
Submove.
Move by guard.
Second.
Seconded by, yeah, I'll get it right here in a minute, Preston. Good. All right, any discussion?
One thing I would add is that, you know, we are, this is an increase. We had some very good years where we, you know, I think it was three or four years where we didn't pass on any increase. So I, you know, I know this affects our end users, but we need to, for enterprise funds.
We're taking. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Number 10, bill number 1883, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a transportation planning consolidated grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization expenses in the city of Cape Girardeau. First reading. I have a motion?
Submove.
Move by guard.
Second.
Seconded by Essex. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 1884, an ordinance adopting a relocation policy in connection with redevelopment projects. First reading.
Submove.
Move by guard.
Second.
Seconded by Preston. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have appointments to the Board of Appeals, two members to be appointed and that would be Kristin Erhan and Brian Harrell.
Submove.
Moved by guard.
Second.
By Essex. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any other business to come before the council?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I hear a second.
Second.
Seconded by Essex. All in favor?
Aye.
And we're, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.
No closed session.
No closed session, by the way.